So, Happy New Year, it's January sixth, twenty twenty-two, and I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council. Uh, meeting to order, let's start with the federal legends. I pledge allegiance.
Legions to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, we do have a, uh, agenda in front of us, but and before that, I think we're gonna go to the oaths of office. And I'm turning over to Dave to, um, explain this next part.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is the first time we've done this via Zoom. So, I think what I would suggest is that there's four council members that will be taking their oath. And that I would, um, lead the council members, and then each council member in turn could follow individually with, with the oath. And then, um, once the fourth council member is, has, has stated their piece, then I would go to the next section. And we continue in that format, uh, until completed. Noting, of course, each council member will, of course, give their own name, and then we give their own, um, council position.
Okay, so can you explain like how, so how this will go?
Well, we, if we go by position numbers, um, Councilmember Vasquez perhaps would be the first to follow me as she's position four. Sequential to you then, you mayor would be number five, um, followed by Councilmember Stedman is number six. And then, Councilmember Cox, um, number seven, I would suggest that. And then I would, I could typically ask you all to raise your hand and then repeat after me, and then in that order, you could each do that.
Okay, that sounds great. Yep, sounds good to me.
Good, so, council members, if you could please raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Carolyn Cox.
Uh, let's do it. Let's just second, let's do it in order, so we'll do, it'll go Carolyn, myself, Mike. Uh, no, it'll go Robin, myself, Mike, and Carolyn. We'll do that in order. So, start off with Robin, then I'll go me and Mike, and okay, okay, ready? Let's do it again.
Perfect, that sounds great, so let's, if you, oh, please raise our hand. I state your name.
I, Robin Vasquez.
I, Andy Ryder.
I, Michael Stedman.
I, Carolyn Cox.
Do solemnly swear.
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 That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
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 Perform and discharge.
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 The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
The duties in the office of.
The duties and the office of.
City of Lacey, City Council, position number, state your position number.
City of Lacey, City Council, position number four.
City of Lacey, City Council, position number five.
City of Lacey, City Council, position number six.
City of Lacey, City Council, position number seven.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
There you go, congratulations. Hopefully, that was, uh, as easy as it could have otherwise been.
Well, thank you, and now that, um, after we've sworn in, um, those four council members, we're gonna go into the nomination, um, and election of the mayor and deputy mayor, and Dave can.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, we need, uh, we need the council to approve the agenda.
Well, I think we'll do that, could do that, um, should we do that now or do that after we swear everyone in, Dave?
Well, according to the agenda, we have that set as item number two, so we proceed first to the election of mayor and deputy mayor, swear them in, and then.
Then we'll go on to the rest of the meeting and adopt the approval agenda, that's why I thought.
Okay.
Okay, for the clarification, so can you, can you talk about this next steps, Dave?
I can, um, and I think it's a good idea that we remind ourselves of the process for selecting a mayor and deputy mayor, so if I can share my screen. So I'll just assume that council can see this, um, what I have here is just a cut and paste job of section two point oh six of the City Council Policy and Procedures. Now, this is the process by which council selects a mayor and deputy mayor, and I'm just gonna walk you through it real quickly. Um, number one, uh, it indicates if there's no sitting mayor, it gives a process for selecting an interim chair. We do have a sitting mayor, so council member, our mayor Ryder is going to, um, um, act as chair here, so we'll go to number three. The mayor will first call for nominations, and we will begin with nominations for the office of mayor. Um, each member of the council may nominate one person. Council members can nominate themselves, they can nominate a different council member, but each council member may nominate one person. Nominations do not require a second. A nominee who wishes to decline the nomination needs to, to speak up and indicate that. The interim, or the, the mayor will then, after confirming that there are no further nominations, will close the nominations. And then this is the voting part, so this is the part that I think we're most concerned with. The mayor's going to conduct the election by voice ballot for each candidate. Now, this part in red is drawn from Robert's Rules of Order. Now, council has adopted Robert's Rules of Order, um, for procedure for council meetings. So I've taken areas of Robert's Rules to kinda flush this out a little bit for process. Now, a vote, as I indicated, the mayor's gonna conduct the election by voice ballot for each candidate. A vote is gonna be taken on each nominee in the order they were nominated until a nominee is elected. So if the first nominee receives four affirmative votes, that would be a majority, that would be the election, that would be the completion, wouldn't go to any further nominees. Um, each vote on each nominee is a separate action, so if there's four nominees, um, beginning with the first nominee, council will vote, anybody that wants to vote affirmatively for that nominee can do so. Um, if that nominee is not elected, then the second nominee would be up for vote, and council members that voted for the first one could also vote for the second one. Um, so council members here may vote affirmatively for multiple candidates, I think that speaks for itself. Um, and then nine, I guess, is, is important, I have it up here in red, but a nominee must receive a majority vote of the members present in order to be elected. Um, so there's seven members present, so four affirmative votes for a nominee will secure that, um, election. And they will take office immediately, um, and then we would repeat that process for deputy mayor. So, I can stop sharing the screen, I don't know, I'll look to you, Mayor, for.
Go, go ahead and stop sharing the screen. Does everyone, uh, are familiar with the rules and ready to go forward? Then with that, I will open up the nominations for the election of mayor, so there'll be nominations for mayor, uh, Councilmember Cox.
I nominate Andy Ryder for mayor.
Thank you. Is there any other nominations? Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close the nominations for mayor. All in favor of electing myself Andy Ryder for mayor for another term, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously passes. Next, I'll open up the, thank you, oh, now I guess we have to the oath of office, thank you, everyone, I really, I appreciate you guys' continued support.
So bear with me, Mayor, while I get my oath for the mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, if you could raise your right hand, I state your name.
I, Andy Ryder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The city of Lacey.
The city of Lacey.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Now, I will go on to the nominations and, uh, and elections of deputy mayor. Are there any nominations for deputy mayor? Ed.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Lenny Greenstein for deputy mayor.
Are there any other nominations for deputy mayor? I will now, uh, go ahead, your own.
I'd like to nominate Malcolm Miller for deputy mayor.
Are there any other nominations for deputy mayor? Any other nominations for deputy mayor? Any other nominations for deputy mayor? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the nominations, uh, for deputy mayor, and first up, all in favor of, uh, Lenny Greenstein as the deputy mayor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, now we're going on to Councilmember Miller. Um, all those in favor of electing, uh, Councilmember Miller to deputy mayor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Uh, Malcolm Miller, you're our next deputy mayor, and we'll have you sworn in with, by Dave.
Deputy Mayor Miller, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Malcolm Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office of deputy mayor.
The duties of the office of deputy mayor.
City of Lacey.
City of Lacey.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is Deputy Mayor Miller, and I look forward to working with you over this next two years, and thank you, Lacey City Council, um, for your continued support, um, and I look forward to having a very productive two years with this council. Um, now we'll go on to the agenda, uh, uh, motion to approve the today's agenda and consent agenda items.
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as posted.
Second.
And move it in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries unanimously. Oops. Um, so next up on our agenda, um, is public comment, and I am not on the agenda, and we didn't receive anyone who signed up for, um, um, for testimony, um, through Zoom, but we did have a one written, um, public comment that's going into the, um, record. And so the next up on our agenda is our resolutions, our resolution, um, eleven fourteen, the Tony Park Estates Ulid petition. It says Peter Brooks.
Let me share my screen. There we go, can everybody see the, uh, point now?
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, so tonight, we're gonna be talking about a resolution um, to set a date for a utility local improvement district formation hearing. Uh, specifically, this is for Tony Park Estates. So a little background of where this is located. Um, if you look, this is Hogs Prairie Road, so we're up in the northeast area. Marvin Road, here's the bend, right here where the cursor's pointing, is the target distribution facility. The area that is in kinda army green, uh, is city limits, the white blue is county. So, right here, the, the dark blue purple, this is Tony Park Estates. It's in the county, but you can see that parts of it are adjacent to the city boundary, right in here. Okay, so a little background about Tony Park Estates, it's a forty-seven parcel neighborhood, uh, that is served by a large onsite, uh, septic system. The acronym for that is ALOS. The LOS is failing and is contin- contaminating surface water and shallow groundwater flowing to Eagle Creek. Systems contract operator wants to see the neighborhood connected to Lacey Sewer before he retires. He's done a great job of trying to keep this system limping along, but he wants to be done with it, and he wants it not to be somebody else's problem. Recent history about the city has been, uh, dealing with this situation. So, this past summer in, uh, July, there was a presentation to the city council. And at that meeting, the city council pledged two million dollars of the approximately three mil- million dollar project cost uh, to ki- to connect this, um, neighborhood to Lacey Sewer. So the plan would be to abandon the current system, which is comprised of individual septic systems on the property, septic tanks, and then the effluent from the tanks go to a large unspect drainage system. So that would all be abandoned, the collected, collection system has a lot of inflow and infiltration to it, so it's not salvageable. So, the existing system would be dismantled, abandoned in place, whatever's appropriate. And then, a new City of Lacey collection system that would connect into the rest of our system would be installed. So the city's interest in contributing two million to the project is protecting that surface water quality. So this is shallow groundwater that's contaminated quickly, uh, surfaces in Eagle Creek, which flows to Woodland Creek, which flows to Puget Sound, uh, so city doesn't want this to continue any longer, so to help facilitate it happening, there's two million dollars pledged. Uh, on the night, uh, September twentieth, there was a presentation to the Tony Park Estates HOA membership. This was a live but virtual, because at that point, we were in one of the, the spike of Delta of the pandemic. And so we had a virtual presentation to the homeowners association, it was fairly well attended, and explained how a utility local improvement district, which you could call a Ulid, uh, how that process would be used to finance this project. Again, a Ulid is simply a financing tool that is allowed under Washington state law. So, the, uh, the people who attended thought it was a good idea, and so we said to the HOA board, we'll give you some petitions, we're not gonna try to form the district by petition, although that is a way Ulids could be formed. We're gonna give you the petition, and we'd like you to distribute it, collect them, and let us know what people say, so the petition simply said I'm in favor of it, or I'm not in favor of moving forward with the Ulid. So when we got the petitions back, we had at least seventy-six percent of the parcels indicating that they approved of moving forward with forming the Ulid. That information was then shared with Utilities Committee at the November committee meeting. And the Utilities Committee said, well, that sounds like a good deal of support, let's move forward to the full council, so that's where we are tonight. So let me tell you a bit more about the petition results, 'cause it's important you understand everything about it, so you can gauge for yourself how much support there is for this, uh, Ulid being formed. Okay, so on this map again, it's the map of the area, the red boundary is the HOA plat boundaries. There are forty-seven parcels that actually have homes on them, you'll see more parcels than that. For example, this one up here is a common area, it's part of the large onsite system. Uh, here's another common area, here's another common area. And you'll notice that the boundary does not include these four parcels, so they're not part of the HOA, they are duplexes that are served by their own separate, uh, septic systems. In addition, these parcels appear not included, they're served by separate septic systems. Okay, so forty-seven parcels, forty, uh, had affirmative votes. So what the, uh, what the HOA leadership did, the board did, was they collected the petitions back, and they gave me the, the ones that were affirmative. Okay, I don't know how many they actually got back, I know they got at least forty, they gave me the affirmative ones. Four of the petitions, so let's just back up for a second, so forty-seven minus forty, that's seven of them are no votes. So the ones with the Xs were taken to be no votes, either they voted to disapprove of moving forward, or they didn't return a petition to the board, I don't know which, but they were not affirmative votes. That's what the Xs mean. Four of the petitions had a different name as the signatory on the petition than the county has on record as owning the parcel. Now, there's nothing shady necessarily going on here. I'll give you an example, I actually gave you two examples, one example is, um, one of the parcels is owned by a trust, it says the so-and-so trust. Okay? And then someone signed it, and their name wasn't even the name of the so-and-so trust. They perfectly could be a legitimate, um, manager of the trust, they could have total legal right to sign. But because the name wasn't the same, and I don't know who's on the trust who has the right to be signatory for the trust, I could, I did not accept that as a yes vote, just to be super conservative, so that you're getting, you know, totally, these are people who support it. Another example is, let's say, uh, Mary Jones signed a petition. You go to the county's, uh, record on the parcel, and it says Mary Smith. Oh, Mary may have changed her name in the intervening time, but I don't know that, and I'm not gonna take the time to research all that. I just put a question mark on those. So those four parcels with the question mark are, the names didn't match up, could be perfectly legit, but they didn't, they didn't line up. So, if you take forty parcels, affirmative votes, uh, the forty-seven, that's a little over eighty-five percent support. If you take a more conservative approach, like I did, and you take out the other four, that are, who knows, that give you thirty-six out of forty-seven, that's still over seventy-six percent approval, over three-quarters approval, so I still say I think we have good support at this point. So there are legislative requirements for moving, for forming a Ulid by resolution. There are different ways, like I mentioned, you could also form it by petition, but that's not what we're doing, we're doing it by resolution. So tonight, before you, there is a resolution that, uh, City Attorney Dave Schm- Schneider has prepared. So this resolution must first declare the city's intent to order the improvement. It needs to set forth the nature and territorial extent of the improvement. It needs to contain a statement that the actual assessments may vary from the assessment estimates, so long as they do not exceed a figure equal to the increased true and fair value of the improvement, which is added to the property. And, you have to notify all persons who may desire to object thereto, to appear and present their objections at a time to be fixed therein. So there is a, a date set, and we'll get to that in a bit, for the formation hearings. This isn't the formation hearing, this is a resolution, which says this is what council is intending to do, and there's going to be a hearing coming up in the future, and if you wanna say something about it, have your piece, show up at the hearing, and have your piece. So once again, the territorial extent, here's, uh, another map, so this gives you the perspective, this inlay here. So right down here in the corner, you can see I five, there's Britain Parkway, Marvin Road, Hogs Prairie Road. Army Green is city, blue is county, there's, there's who we're talking about, Tony Park Estates. And then here it is all blown up, and parcel numbers added in, just in case you wanna like, check out the parcel number and verify everything. So then we have to talk about the cost, that's one of the legislative requirements. So at this point, we're really early, you don't have a, a, you could build a design, we just have a conceptual design, but the total cost is a little over three million dollars. That total cost is, uh, includes connection fees. But it also includes the anticipated rebate that the parcel owners will get from Lot on the capacity development charge. At this time, and we believe Lot will continue to do this for next these few years, uh, Lot will rebate people who connect, because they have failing septics, they'll rebate them fifty percent of the, the connection cost for Lot, not the Lacey part, but the Lot part. So that three million eighty-five thousand and such figure includes the connection fees with the rebate. Uh, Lacey's participation is two million dollars, so that leaves the Tony share a little over a million dollars, since there's forty-seven parcels. That makes it a little over twenty-three thousand dollars per parcel, is what we're estimating at this point, starting into the process. So there has to be a date and time, so the resolution that has been prepared for you, uh, states that February third i- during the council meeting of that date, is the date and time place where this will be heard, and people can raise an objection if they choose to do so. So the staff recommendation is that you approve the resolution setting the date for the formation of, for the formation hearing for the Tony Park Estates Ulid. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Yes, can you please stop sharing your screen?
Yes, sir.
So, I have a couple of questions, um, first of all, since, according to, I think, our, our own ordinance, since they're outside the city of limits, and we're going to be extending services to them, they need to come into the city late, they need to be annexed in the city of Lacey first, since they're contiguous with the city of Lacey, I, and I, so when is that gonna happen in this process?
Okay, so what, what our regulations say is if they're getting a new City of Lacey utility service, they have to sign, I'll call it a waiver protest. Lawyer D would probably say it's a slightly different name, but it's, that's basically what it is, a waiver protest. Uh, that's what they have to sign to get the utility service. When they actually get annexed is a whole nother question. That's a function of both, are we creating islands of still in the county? Um, it gets into, when does council wanna do this? So, the actual time of annexation is a different question. What will happen if they move forward with this is, they will sign that, I'll call it waiver of annexation, and that'll be available then for a future annexation.
I mean, it's sort of the intent of that, but.
Just clarify.
Go ahead.
It's a power of attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Power of attorney. I just, I think the whole intent of that was, you know, and, and we've seen this in other parts of the city, where they have come into the city first before we've extended sewer and water. I, I just don't know why we'd make the exception. I I just don't know why we'd make the exception in this circumstance. You think that they need to be in the city first. I mean, can someone explain why we wouldn't? Do that in this circumstance? I mean, we just went through another annexation where they want sewer. On their parcel and they they came, they had to come into city first. What what what's different in this circumstance?
I I will defer that to Dave since you're asking a legal question.
Dave?
Yeah, I uh. I guess I'll look to to Scott for for where we required annexation provide prior to extending services. But my my understanding is exactly what what Peter indicated is that they would. Basically sign a power of attorney authorizing the public works director to act on their behalf in any future annexation process. They would be waiving their right to protest their lot being annexed into the city. But that would be a future occurrence and that wouldn't, wouldn't occur now.
I mean, now you have to Scott, we just went through two annexations recently. Went off the Carpenter Road and one down um a little bit farther where they had to come into the city before we extended sewer. What's different in this?
Well, so if you recall, we did something very similar to Cap City. So because. This is somewhat initiated. We're trying to solve a septic failure issue. Um, that does give us a latitude that does not cause automatic annexation. So you still have, the city still has the ability to choose the timing and when it's appropriate to annex an area. I mean, our initial thought was trying to solve an initial problem related to a failure of a community septic tank.
Same understanding with the Cap City. We're trying to uh resolve potential failure of the wells that are servicing our city. Uh, that's why we pushed uh annexation of Cap City.
I just, yeah, I just, I I'll get Scott, I guess you put your hand up. I'll let you chime in here.
Yeah, so. Our development guidelines do not require annexation for top prior to connection to utility services. So that's a fact. It's not a requirement. Number two. Just as far as being a selfish public works director, I don't want anything to interfere with the flow, the project flow of the process. You know, and I mean, you know, under the council's direction, annexation can take place on a separate track. But I just ask that you not interfere with the timeliness in the process for designing and installing. Sewer, that's the whole reason we're doing this is to mitigate a uh a water quality concern.
I, so I totally understand that, but did did this council not pass an ordinance that says if you're adjacent to the city of Lacey? And you need your requested services, water or sewer, you have to come in the city first. Scott?
Well, just for clarity, so it it's, the distinction is if it's a city initiated or if it's a development related process. So in this regard, we're assisting a parcel or told me state of parks with a septic failure. If a landowner who wanted to develop property, wanted to develop and they need our services to basically develop. Then that's a developer owner initiated process, which then would require annexation. So you gave yourself flexibility if the city was initiating a project, that that would not automatically require annexation.
Okay. Interesting. Peter?
Just another point, if you recall the maps that I was showing, just out that told me, there is this little island. And it's. Spattered on the other three sides by city. So to annex Tommy before those others are addressed. Whatever that means, would create an island and the boundary review board might take issue with that.
No, and I imagine that what that island would have to come in as well. I guess this needs to be a a topic for a different discussion because. I guess I didn't realize in the ordinance that we made an exception for people who are trying to develop it compared to anyone who's trying to receive services.
And one, one of the comment to mayor, so I think we were trying to be mindful. Let's say a single business. Let's say they were on septic and it had a failure. And they are now in emergency. They need to solve their septic sewer slash issue. Do you wait for a six-month process to go through an annexation before you solve that issue? So that was, that's kind of the reality, those two sort of policy distinctions there. I know customer Vasquez had a question too.
Uh, council member?
There a threshold in the legislation around Ulids for how much support we have to receive, Peter? Is it just a simple majority?
Since you're doing this by resolution, there is no amount. Uh, that's why staff went and got the petitions done, even though we're not doing the process by the petition method. So the council would have some sense of support. Uh, what we don't want to do is go to the formation hearing and have everybody come in and say, why are you doing this to us? It's, it's not where we want you to end up being. So the petitions show a fair amount of support. It's unlikely that's going to erode between now and February.
What's the timeline for payback of the lien?
Excuse me, I couldn't hear that.
The the U L, U L, Ulid terms, what will the term speak? Is it a twenty year?
How long does it take them to pay it back?
I I'm not sure. Usually those things are fifteen years. Sometimes they'd be twenty years, but I'm not sure how this one's going to go.
And and council member Vasquez, um perhaps I'll add a comment to what Peter indicated. At the formation hearing, which will be set by this resolution if council passes it, which will be about a month sometime in February. Um, property owners will be given the opportunity to protest or object. And if the city receive, and then there's, if the the council then passes an ordinance. Creating the Ulid, there's an appeal period. That if sixty percent of the assessed value of the area, if the property owner is owning sixty percent. Appeal, that would divest the city council the authority to go forward and it would basically end the the process. But what Peter's indicating is we've done that preliminary research to safeguard ourselves from that situation. So that assuming everybody's being forthright about their desires, you know, that wouldn't occur.
Plus, for instance, one property owner owned sixty percent of the value in a handful of parcels and they changed their mind. But unlikely.
Yeah, but if. If you look at the uh, the way the plat is laid out, the homes, I mean, obviously they have varying value, but they're similar enough. So really, it's, you know, you might see seven people. Because we have, don't have all of the votes affirmed. There might be seven people who show up and say. Like, what are you doing to us? And you'll have to judge for yourself. Well, that means there's forty who didn't show up.
So here's, here's my other question. See, if you look at the map, there's quite a few people that are on septic. Around this area. Have we reached out to them and asked if they want to be a part of this Ulid?
Uh, we haven't reached out to them because they're on individual septic. And connecting them in and making them part of the Ulid, especially since council has generously. Pledge two million dollars within dilute the two million dollars amongst these other people who don't have the same problem that the told me people have. And it would just kind of make it politically awkward. So what our plan is. The uh, the four duplexes, we will reach out to them and say, do you want to connect during the project? And we will stub out to them so they can either at that time or sometime in the future without. It being difficult and tearing up the road and so forth. But they would do that on their own money. They're not going to get financing through the Ulid. It's kind of important that the people who have the loss, the large onsite system that's failing. That they're the ones who are paying for the balance of the project and you don't complicate it with other people who don't have the same problem and. Fingers get pointing at each other and you're benefiting at my expense and we just, I would prefer we don't go there.
Okay, that's interesting because I mean, I, I think it's been the, the, you know. This council's wish that we connect as many people who are on failing septic systems up to up to sewer. And it just wouldn't make sense that we're doing all this work and going through all this process and if it's. You could hook other people up at the same time and they can share in the cost. That we wouldn't offer that to them. I mean, the, the whole point, can people offer septic systems and on to sewer?
It is, and and you know, I've been going advocating for this, but. Let's take the people in the four duplexes. Uh, if their septic systems are working fine. Why would they want to contribute? Why would they want to have twenty-three thousand dollars or it changes a little bit? Maybe it's twenty-one thousand, whatever. Why would they want to have that kind of an obligation to pay off for their subject system that works? They wouldn't. They would resent it. They'd start, they come to your meeting on the third and say, I don't want to do this.
I'm not saying let's, I'm not saying let's force them. I'm saying let's ask the question.
Right, we're going to operate, exactly. Anybody who's right on the line that we're constructing. We will make it so that they can stub in whenever they want to, and we will ask them if they want to now so they can coordinate with our contractor. And be connected at that time. But they will be paying that separately out of their own pocket, will not be financed through the Ulid. And if they don't want to do it, they won't do it, but they know that the city has put a line in front of their house and they can connect in the future.
There any other, any other questions?
I was just gonna, with what Peter had already expressed, I was going to also express. Uh, if it, if it isn't broke, there's no motivation to fix it. But it's nice to have options. If the stub is there for them to hook up to when their septic system or if their septic system fails. And they have options and we haven't left them in the dark.
Honey?
The only thing I question on that is, we don't know the condition of those septic systems, of course. If one of them did want to hook up or two or three or whatever, I mean, I'm not, and I I agree, we should not force them to, but by any means. But if they want to, how is it fair that they're not going to participate in? The two million dollars that the city is putting up and they're going to have to pick up the entirety of the cost. I'm not sure I understand the uh, the balance there.
I don't, I don't understand that either, to be truthful. Uh, Scott, Edgar?
So we learned this lesson during the formation of Tango Wild East Three B. There's some similarities there where there is a failing community septic system that had to connect. And we initially came to the council with the proposal to form an LID just with them. The council said, we'll go back. And form the LID with everybody that now fronts the main. And we went and invited all those people and all those people that didn't have to connect caused that to fail. So we've learned this lesson before. We've already been down that road before. And um, you know, and anyway, it's just.
Well.
That's what we experienced before.
And and I agree, I I I, I'm not saying. Um, let's force them wherever, but it it, it does, it does make sense that we're giving. Two million dollars here. If if one of those parcels around this area wanted to connect at the same time. I just don't know why we wouldn't extend that benefit to everyone who wants to participate at that time. Now, you're absolutely right. Those people, those other parcels might say, no, we're not interested. We're, we're going to do it on our own. We'll stub it up fine. It just doesn't seem right that we want to offer them the same deal just because. They're not a part of this HOA who has the failing septic, but that just doesn't make any sense to me. Now, at the end result might be the exact same. They're going to say, no, fine, let's go on. But I I feel like we should at least offer the, the same. Deal. Peter Brooks?
Yeah, so. Before you tonight is a resolution that specifies February third is the date for the formation hearing. And it contains the boundaries of the district that is proposed to be formed. If council's direction is, well, let's go research this some more. Then we can just put the resolution aside, it'll get edited for future use. And staff would go out and inquire who in the area wants to do this. And then if nobody came back and said, we want to, we have lost a month or two. And then we come back and do this all over again. So the alternative is, you simply say to people, get some equity in your home. Housing prices have been shooting up for the last few years. Get yourself a home equity loan and connect during the project. It'll be cheaper for you to coordinate with our contractor. Versus delaying the whole project. To maybe add somebody, maybe not add anybody to the Ulid boundaries.
And I'll, and I'll add, we have a distinct problem with a failing septic system. That is causing concern um and public safety issues with our water. And that's the reason, that specific reason is why councils didn't even in contributing any dollars. Um, and I, if we were to go ask all those people, I'm sure we would find some. But I'm also sure we'd find some that didn't want to, and it's going to be a slippery slope. Where are you going to draw that line and and how much further do you go? And I I, I just caution council um. Against, against ta- moving away from the defined area that we have and the defined um problem that we have.
Is there any other question, any other questions? The the the, first of all, does anyone want us to go back and and? Talk to the other property owners first before we move forward?
I did have one, one question.
Go ahead.
Kind of a semantics question, but is this um? It, are we going to have to build a new lift station? Are we going to be able to? I I know there is one uh within the vicinity that we had talked about doing a rehab job on and we. Did a proposal and so on and so forth. Is that going to service this community or are we going to do a, do a new one? I didn't know.
Forty-six parcels is not going to overcapacity anything we have in the system now. Obviously, it's forty more. It's, it's not the same as it was before, so it's more flow. But in and of itself, it is not going to trigger any capital improvements to uh collection or lift stations or anything of that sort.
So it'll be the same one off of Britain Parkway?
Right, it it'll, it'll flow within its base into all the different lift stations it needs to go to.
Yeah, this, the specific lift station that will serve this is located right near the edge of that development. Uh, in Eagle Court on the corner of Thirty Second and. Uh, I don't know if Eagle Court Lane, but it's, yeah, it's within a few hundred feet of the manhole this is all going to dump into.
Thank you.
Okay, well, it sounds like there needs to be a motion on the floor. Can I get a motion?
Ordinance sixteen eleven. Resolution sixteen eleven, excuse me.
You moved to adopt the resolution sixteen eleven. Is there a second?
Second.
Or isn't this uh, resolution one 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 four?
Oh, yeah, this is right. This is uh, moved to adopt resolution one 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 four.
Yep. So I would move that we adopt resolution one 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 four as written.
And there's a second. Second, okay? Here we go. Is there any further discussion? Are we on good legal terms here, Dave?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Cox?
Just, as much as I appreciate what you were saying, mayor, about annexation and all. I think, you know, this is a ticking time bomb and and we can't afford delays right now on this in terms of. An ecological and public health disaster.
I I understand, I I do understand that. I I guess I didn't realize the ordinance that we had passed earlier made an exception. Between developers and people who are in this circumstance. And so. I get, that's where I was just, I was missing it because it didn't make any sense that we required two, you know, parcels, other parcels recently. Coming to the count uh, city first before we extended services, but we're not requiring it in this circumstance, you know. I guess this does go on to another um, larger question that we need to continue to have is what parcels out there do we have? Um, the powers of attorney of, and when should they come into the city? Um, so that's ongoing annexation. Um, conversations that we need to have on this council. Is there any other, is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and second to adopt resolution eleven fourteen. I'll take over that motion. Signified by saying aye.
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 Aye. And that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, thanks Peter.
Good luck, Peter.
Next up is under ordinances, uh, ordinance sixteen eleven, which is to amend uh. This is Miss Code four fifty-two relating to the civil service commission. This is an interesting. Um, I'll turn it over to you. Think you're on mute. There you go.
Good evening. Well, it is an unusual conversation, but we appreciate that we have. Um, the ability to come before the council to ask for some creativity. And helping us make sure that um, we can continue with continuity of our operations and hiring police staff and personnel. And certifying the list um, under our appropriate rules or civil service rules. Um, while we work on getting a full quorum on our civil service commission. So the request that we're bringing before you um is to um. Ask that you authorize the city manager to appoint a temporary secretary or chief examiner. Um, our current chief examiner is out on extended leave and we're not sure when they'll return. Um, and that temporary chief. Um, and that temporary chief examiner would serve in the capacity. Um, with the full roles and duties until such time our civil service commission is able to. Meet with the full quorum and appoint officially that alternate, um, secretary or chief examiner.
So does everyone understand what we're, what we're trying to do here? Okay, can I get a motion?
Try to fill a gap.
Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
I would move that we adopt ordinance number one-six-one-one, authorizing the city manager to appoint a temporary civil service secretary and or chief examiner.
Then, uh, moved and seconded discussion, Councilor Greenstein.
So, when you say until such time as you can have a media, a quorum to official, when, when do you expect that to be?
Well, I believe, um, Mary Ann, our H R director, was working with the city clerk. On getting the advertisement, the posting that we have a vacancy. Um, and, uh, I think that that posting will be out for four weeks. So, you know, given those timeframes, um, and that posting should go out tomorrow. Probably not for a few months that we could, um, get all of the, uh, interested parties. Um, interviewed and then appointed, uh, with all of the process that that involves and then, um. Set up the first meeting of a full commission, so I'm hoping maybe in March.
I guess I'm a little confused, so how big is the commission and how many openings are there?
Um, so we have two vacancies, um, and a full quorum is three. Um, well, yes, three, uh, and right now, um, we have a chair. Um, we just don't have the other two members, um. I think we had a, a, a retirement, um, and then somebody just opted to sort of move on, so. Um, an unfortunate circumstances of weird events, we. Um, had one person doing the dual role of civil service secretary and examiner. Uh, and then they went out and, you know, we're just sort of trying to figure out like, oh. We, we need, we need a full commission and, um, in the interim, we need to continue to hire our police officers. Which requires, uh, my position to be able to certify those eligibility lists, uh, to keep the process moving.
Councilor Sedman? Thank you, Mayor. Um, talked about importance, the continuing of hiring officers, especially in this environment. Um, is crucial, talk that you're number one public safety issue next to water quality probably, or, or at least equal. Um, uh, Jerry Wilkins is on that commission, right? Is he, or did he retire? He's the only one, that's, that's on it right now, so we have, we have two vacancies that are open and, and, um, the vacancies. If, if he wasn't, he retired, we could ask him to come back maybe, I don't know, but, yeah, this, this is a real emergency, so I, I understand it. And it, this is one of those weird circumstances where I'm not the one that's appointing to this civil service commission either, it's the. Scott Spence as our city manager is doing these appointments, so it's one that. It's a, it's interesting how this is all set up, you know, it's sort of kind of an archaic way of, of how we did this. Um, but it's very obviously important in the process of hiring police officers, which we need to do. They need to go through this process and we just don't have it in place right now, and so this is really important that we get this, get this done.
Yeah, and we have been, um, in contact with our chair, Jerry, uh, to let him know what we're working on. Um, and that, you know, we're, we're trying to be extremely fast in this process as much as we can, so he is totally in the loop. Um, and was, uh, very supportive of getting this help, um, creative solution in the interim.
So have we advertised for these two positions already?
The advertisement goes out tomorrow, we, um, Mary Ann was just letting me know.
Okay, Councilor Vasquez?
Thank you. But honey, has one of these positions been vacant for a long time? Because I remember seeing a posting for this two years ago, before I applied to the planning commission, I recall. And I, I'm guessing it's because there's some specific type of experience you're looking for from people applying for positions. Or maybe you just haven't got any applicants, I don't know.
Right, um, I think, again, it's, it's a interesting perfect storm, we've had, um. You know, the pandemic and, uh, a lot of work, as you know, because you're in H R, that's been going on behind the scenes around that. Um, and I think with, um. Things going virtual and, and what have you, we did have an opening a considerable time ago, maybe at the beginning of this year. Early or at the end of the last year, you're correct. Um, and it just didn't get filled and, um, our absent H R person. Was letting us know they were working on it, um, and then they went out, so we're sort of in this, um, interesting scenario. Uh, and I can assure you, it's not a typical one, um, where we've have two members that, uh, we need to fill. Um, and you, yeah, in a normal circumstance. We are advertising in advance of a known term ending or somebody letting us know, because most of our commissioners. As far as I can tell in our historical documents, let us know in advance, we're going to be moving on to doing something else. And they give us an opportunity to try to fill before they leave, so our intent is to, uh, be able to fix that. And keep it fixed.
Is, is it statutory set law that we, it's, it's a three member? Or can we expand it to like, say, five, where we're not in the circumstances where a couple of people drop off, we, the whole thing shuts down?
I think we are, um, currently a three member, which is part of a code. Which I think may reflect state law, Dave can maybe chime in on that.
Yeah, council would, I'd have to follow up on this, but. The R C Ws provide a process for civil service commission and council can deviate from that, provided it's. Um, meeting the intent of the R C Ws, so I'd have to follow up with, uh, up, up on you. But I, I do believe council would be able to increase the, the numbers.
Well, maybe we should look into doing that, we have a lot of hires that we make coming up. I know, I mean, there's a ton of turnover that's going on, a lot of people retiring, we just don't want to be in this position again, so. Um, I know that the action we're taking right now allows Scott to kind of subvert, you know. To point this and, and, and try to get around this, but we need to get back on track as, as soon as we can, so maybe it's something that would. Dave, if you can maybe look into that and maybe give some options, um, and we can address that again.
I'll, I'll discuss with the city manager and, and bring that back in appropriate.
Appreciate.
Yeah, I like to think this is just a bridge, not subversion.
Well, he hits, you're right, it is a bridge, but the fact that we're here tells you something that maybe we need to look at expanding it.
Yeah, one thing I would like you to just be aware is, um. We have a pretty fast acting team, uh, that came behind and we've been working really closely with our administrative, um, staff. Over in the police department to make sure that everyone that's been in the police hiring pipeline has continued to move forward. There's been no pause in that process at this point, which is why we were quickly trying to get in front of you. So that I can certify the lists that have come through. Um, in order for us to officially hire anyone that gets through the backgrounds and all the rest of the steps. But at this point, we were able to just jump right in and pick up, um, behind our staff person. And, um, it's actually kind of fun because I, I didn't get to do civil service when I was at my former city, so I'm, um. Appreciating the learning opportunity and, uh, getting to work with our public safety testing folks.
Sure, it, you know, and I know we have to do this out of necessity, but it'd be nice to get a full commission back. And so they're looking at all the applications, so on and so forth, so, you know, um, we have to do this out of necessity, but it's. Let's, let's get, not to the full commission as soon as possible. Is there any, is there any other discussion? Saying none's been moved and second to, uh, adopt ordinance sixteen eleven relating to the civil service commission, I'll impair that motion. Signified by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So, uh, next up on our agenda, um, just real quick on the, on the mayor's report. Um, there's, there's a couple of things that we need to talk about, obviously, um. Today we're meeting back, uh, virtually, that wasn't the plan originally, we were going to meet in person. Um, but the events of that has happened really over this past week and a half. Um, two weeks with Omicron is just, um, been crazy, uh, all time highs and transmission and everything else. Um, and so, right now, what we're, what the, the plan is, is that we're going to. Hopefully meet back in February first, go into a hybrid situation. And so we're going to try, just try and make it through this month, get through this, this wave. Um, and go back into a hybrid situation in the first meeting of, of February. But what we'll do is, we'll, we'll talk again at the, our next. Um, you know, before the end of the year and just verify where we're at, you know, hopefully. We're, you know, this is peaking and we'll, we'll get through this and we'll finally get back into an hybrid situation, so that's, that's number one. Number two, um, after this meeting, um. It's going to go out to the, the full council, the, the normal, uh, boards and commissions. And what's your first and second and third priorities, um, on all the boards and commissions? That will go out and the next Thursday at our work session. We'll go through it like we do every couple of years and, and, and see where everyone's first, you know, where everyone's at. We'll talk about then, and then, um, the following Thursday is when we'll, uh, um. I'll, I'll work with the deputy mayor between that and the following Thursday and we'll, you know. Hopefully figure it all out and, and the formal, um, committee assignments will be at that following council meeting. Councilmember Greenstein?
So, they're going to go out, do you want us to get them back to you then, prior to next Thursday's meeting, I'm assuming, right?
So, yeah, it's the next Thursday meeting, if you, if you can go out, it'll go out, you know, tomorrow sometime, well. Need, need that all by next Thursday meeting, we'll, we'll talk it through at next Thursday's meeting and, and we'll see where everyone's at. And just to give, um, the deputy mayor and myself some good direction on, on where we're at. And that next week, typically even the deputy mayor, myself and Scott will sort of meet and discuss everything. And, um, we'll come up with a, you know, a proposal that hopefully works for the whole council and we'll discuss it again on the following Thursday, so. You know, we try to accommodate everyone's, everyone there, so, um, that's just the, I just want to talk about what that process is for. For Councilmember, uh, Vasquez in this circumstance of, of what we do, go through it to figure this all out, so. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager's report.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Mayor and City Council have a interlocal agreement before you, which is, uh, Fire District Three. Between the city and the Fire District for confined space rescue, Scott Devlin. Our Public Works Manager Supervisor is going to provide that report.
Hello, uh, Mayor Ryder and City Council members. My name's Scott Devlin and Scott Spence just shared with you, I'm going to share my screen now. Right. So, uh, this presentation is for the I L A for confined space rescue with Lacey Fire District number three. Give you guys a little history here, uh, of the agreement and the agreement overview. So the agreement overview, in two thousand twenty-two, the city of Lacey will pay our district number three in the amount of thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. For fifty percent of the estimated cost for initial training, equipment and related startup costs. In two thousand twenty-three and following years, the city will pay Lacey Fire District number three annual drill expenses in the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred dollars. Plus the Seattle Bremerton C P I up to five percent for subsequent years. And also starting in two thousand twenty-three, Lacey Fire District number three will pay for any equipment upkeep or additions. That may be needed to carry out this agreement. So, uh, what is confined space rescue? So confined space rescue is a technical rescue operation performed within an area having limited accessibility and egress. Examples of confined spaces include storage tanks, silos, underground municipal infrastructures. Water storage tanks, wastewater lift stations, stormwater filter sites and manholes. Um, in the event of an emergency, time is of the essence, as most individuals have approximately four minutes without breathable air before they suffocate. And two-thirds of all deaths occurring in confined spaces are attributed to people attempting to rescue someone else. This makes proper planning and execution by the rescue team one of the most important factors. So if you don't know that here at Public Works Operations, we go into confined spaces with a permit. Approximately thirty times a month, um, which kind of leaves our, our crews exposed without a rescue effort that's very close by. So confined space rescue history here at the city of Lacey, in two thousand four, two thousand four to two thousand fourteen. Uh, Lacey operations had their own confined space rescue team. Um, the train cost approximately was forty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars per year on average. Uh, we purchased a trailer and the equipment in two thousand four for this service and that was about thirty-five thousand dollars. But what happened is in two thousand fourteen, to do declining employee participation. And the increased cost of the internal program, that was dissolved. Um, employees no longer really, one, had adequate training to do the rescues. Um, and also, people just really didn't want to make the extra effort on the job. And so this was turned over to, uh, a rescue team that was Lacey Fire District. And then, you know, just calling nine-one-one for dispatch on that. Here are a couple of pictures here, here's our rescue team back in that timeframe doing a, uh, training. That they, you know, in a, in a trench, in the trench box, this is one way you would have a confined space rescue. And, and our team also was part, well, our team, our equipment was part of a rescue that happened up at Costco where the gas tank. They were digging the hole for the gas tanks and it all kind of fell in on the workers there, we were sucking the hole out with our back on units. Um, so we assisted fire departments a couple of years ago with that. Uh, this is a dry well that goes in one of our lift stations, so you can see kind of like when a worker goes down this ladder down to the bottom of the dry well. It's quite deep, some of these are, you know, up to thirty feet deep and, uh, it's a very difficult place to get somebody out of, if something happens. Medical emergency, uh, to gases, anything else. And when our crews go down in these places, they, uh, they test the air, so they have air monitors. If, if oxygen levels ever drop below nineteen point five percent, the alarms go off and they know something's wrong, so they can try to get out of there. Um, and they will evacuate, there's also a cable that gets hooked to the person. When they go down in these holes, you can see on this person here on the left-hand side. Coming up his back is a, is a cable he's tied off onto, so we already had to crank him out, you know, we could get him out of there. So this is a picture of the bottom of the dry well and, uh, this is kind of the workspace is there on the bottom. And the next picture here is a wet well, some of our guys go down in wet wells also, so. Um, you can imagine being down here with all the different gases that are in septic systems. So our current confined space rescue program has relied on Lacey Fire Department and Thurston County Special Operations Rescue Team. And the, the issue has been that all the equipment is located in McLean Black Lake Fire Department and Olympia Fire Department. And their estimated response time for us is about forty-five minutes. So if one of our crew members has a medical problem or issue at bottom of one of these, these wells, they, they could be stuck in there for. Probably up to an hour, it takes forty-five minutes for them to respond to the site. So we're proposing a partnership with Lacey Fire District number three through this I L A. And we met with them in two thousand twenty and, uh, came to an agreement that they would be able to provide a fifteen-minute response time or faster. If they had the adequate equipment and training that was necessary for that. Um, if we enter into this in a local agreement with the fire department. They will split the initial cost with us fifty-fifty and the initial training and equipment cost is seventy-six thousand five hundred and one dollars. So the city of Lacey's initial portion will be thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty. Um, there would be an ongoing commitment for us of nineteen thousand four hundred and four dollars for some training. And so, let's see. And one of the benefits in this partnership, so having a confined space rescue team and equipment house a. A local fire department that's close by will only benefit the city of Lacey and employees, also benefits contractors that are in the area that work here. And the citizens within Lacey's Fire District, they'll have additional training and equipment to respond to any sort of confined space rescue effort. And, uh. The fire department staff really are the professionals who train and respond to emergencies on a regular basis. So this puts us back into the hands of, when we were trying to do the training ourselves, their maintenance staff. Trying to learn how to respond to emergencies and save lives, where they only train on a limited. where they only train on a limited basis and didn't really have a good background, where the fire department themselves, they do this day in, day out and they rescue people all the time and they are really good at it. So it puts the, puts it right into the hands of the people who need it. Um, of course, the faster response times of fifteen minutes or less, you know, instead of the forty-five minutes that we had. And the, uh, the savings to the city of Lacey is around thirty thousand dollars, uh, per year, a little bit more than that actually. Um, and expanded training and resources for Lacey Fire District number three. So what we're asking you tonight to do is to approve this ILA with Lacey Fire District number three, what staff recommendation is.
Can you stop sharing your screen?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion please?
Move to approve the ILA with the Lacey Fire District three.
Second.
Then move in second to, uh, approve this interlocal agreement with, uh, Fire District three for confined space rescue. Uh, council member Greenstein.
I said one question. In in that presentation, I thought you, did you say that they have only four minutes of air in some of those?
That is correct. Yes, it matters what kind of gas there is inside the compartments. For the city of Lacey, most of our, our compartments do not have toxic gas. But there can be carbon dioxide and other gases that are in there that you can suffocate from pretty rapidly.
And the only reason I'm asking is because it's great that we'll have a fifteen-minute response time instead of forty-five, but if you only have four minutes, fifteen is still not a really good outcome here.
Right, right. And that's, that's true. You know, it's just really good that they're close by though, and they probably will be way faster than fifteen minutes. And the problem that happens there is that, uh, staff, like to myself, like I go out there with a staff member and we're working inside of one of these and they collapse in the bottom of the, uh, of the dry well. And I go down there to pull them out and then I end up collapsing myself. That's the problem that happens in that situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Then you have two victims instead of just one. So, um, but my question is in regards to equipment. So will the fire district assume the equipment that we have? Buy new? Will we put our other stuff up for auction and keep in a reserve? How's that work?
Yeah, so all the equipment we currently had back in two thousand fourteen is pretty old and antiquated now. They're gonna buy all the brand new equipment.
Council member.
That was my question too.
Okay.
I was just curious about the old equipment and if it was still any good.
Yeah, we use a trailer. We're, the trailer itself has a generator on it and we use it for other things.
Well, one other thing, we have a lot of trucks that have the smaller, um, cranes appetizers on the back of them too. That could be used as, um, retrieval device, right? If they're having their, if they have a harness. Maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, so there is a, there's a special standard that we put up on top of these, these wells and attach them with the, it's, there are some winches that go onto them. They're attached when they go down inside any of these places. And one other thing I didn't add to also is that, um, we will be calling the fire department for any sort of after, after hours, um, confined space entry that we do, so they know exactly where we are and exactly what equipment they need and all of that. So uh, they'll be well informed when we go into these spaces.
Great. Well, thank you. Well, this, this is obviously a, a no-brainer, right? Let's, let's equip our Lacey Fire District three with the with the tools and training that they need to, um, not only help our employees, but help the rest of the community and be ready to and let's save money in the meantime and have a quicker response time. I mean, sounds like it's a win-win-win-win in this circumstance. So thank you, Lacey Fire District three for actually stepping up and 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 paying for half this cost too, because, um, you know, they didn't necessarily have to do that either and we still need, need this service. So, um, I really appreciate the partnership with them. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to, um, pass this ILA with the Fire District three for confined space rescue. I'll impair that motion signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? And that motion passes unanimously.
So council, I just have one more update. As you probably are aware, we've, uh, had substantial rainfall here in the first five days of the new year. Um, just a perspective, the average rainfall is typically about, uh, one inch or one point three inches and we're about two point seven nine inches. We are fairly good about flooding, but I was just alerted the fact that, uh, we are going to have to close Rainier Road at the Train Trussel. If people are familiar with that area, it's just south of Horizon Point subdivision. Um, unfortunately, there are no good detour routes. You'd either have to go on Yelm Highway, go Rich Road and take a very circuitous route through Fur Drive into Rainier Road, Road, or actually go Spurgeon Creek. So we will be working with Public Affairs to get that information out. But there will be reader boards basically saying that area is closed. We also have an area at Corporate or Intel Loop and, uh, Yelm Highway that are scanning water and we have signs out there. So just kind of a cautionary note to drivers, a lot of rainfall or sometimes catch basins, um, get backed up and, uh, just be very cautious when driving on city streets.
We have any idea when that will get back open? I mean, it's been amazing, the rainfall that we've had over the, you know, even past twenty-four hours is like it's coming down the peaks. And so you know that with, uh, after this now we just had that, that this was gonna be a possibility. So, uh, I imagine there's a bunch of flood warnings out there, these sizes. So, um, when, when do we think we can get those, those uh, those roads back open?
Um, probably not even till this weekend. Right now there's six inches of water flowing over the road. And if you looked at the forecast, we have rain up until really Saturday to Sunday, it starts to break. And then there's more rain to follow next week. So it'd be the bare bad news, but there's a lot of rain, fall in the forecast.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
Well, thank you for that. Um, next up is Boards Commission Committee Reports. I'm up first. I do not have reports. Uh, council member Cox.
Okay, well, I have one report and one announcement. Um, Intercity Transit Authority met last night. Um, fairly light agenda, but a couple of things of interest. Um, we authorized the general manager to, um, expand a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a, um, solution air, air purification solution. And what we were told is that this system is going to filter out ninety-five percent of viruses and airborne pollutants. So it should make riding on intercity transit buses even safer, but particularly in the day of COVID, that's I thought that was very welcome and reassuring news that we could do that for that relatively small amount of money. And, uh, for people who have a little difficulty, uh, boarding the rear entry on buses, they're working on designing construction of bus pads that will make it easier for people to take that high step up. I know I struggle with it sometimes because my legs are much shorter than you might think, given my height. A couple of operators were recognized for literally saving a man's life at Capitol Mall recently. Um, they got alerted that this, this gentleman was in distress and not breathing and they literally jumped in and performed CPR. And it's just, you know, one of the many ways intercity transit employees distinguish themselves. And lastly, the City of Olympia Design Review Board selected the Olympia Transit Center's um, new building project for special recognition. Uh, it's gonna receive the Design Review Board Award for Merit for twenty-twenty-one. And the reason I call this to your attention is that they were, they said that they found the project to be an excellent example of civic architecture, integrating so many qualities from how it fits within its context, what surrounds it to the building material choices and the energy efficiency of the building. I take this as issue the challenge that as we look ahead toward building a law enforcement justice center that we also bring those elements to bear and and in our project, maybe we'll give an award too.
Could I ask a quick question, council member Cox?
Sure.
Do we know who the individuals were that saved that man's life?
Yes, we do. Pull up my notes, um. Paul Tisher, T I S C H E R, and Ted Depoe. D E P O E.
Thank you.
Both fine gentlemen.
That's wonderful. That's great. That's great news. And I know that people at Intercity Transit do great work all the time and great public service. So, um, please pass along our, our thanks to them, um, from our city council.
I will do that. I mean, there, there were lots of other recognitions last night at the meeting, but that one really stood out. And then, um, as you know, I've been serving as the alternate to Cynthia Pratt as um, as the lead on the climate mitigation steering committee. And I just wanted to, um, give you all a heads up that at our next work session coming up on the thirteenth, um, we're gonna get detailed packets that deal with the phase four climate mitigation interlocal agreement, the associated costs, the governance details and all that. So all, all of that will be there for us to chew on and I just wanted to let you know that this is coming, so you're not surprised.
Thank you.
I'd also like to make this climate mitigation report part of the monthly report outs. I think it's, it's grown enough in stature that like Regional Housing Council, it deserves a report. We can talk about that next time.
Let's, let's talk about the next Thursday.
Yeah. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Um, next up is council member Greenstein.
I have one report tonight. Uh, TCOM nine eleven met yesterday. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, the financials are looking really great this year. Uh, revenue is actually above budget and uh, expenses are below. Uh, sales tax are actually up fourteen percent, sales tax collection year-to-date. So uh, for last year, that's pretty impressive numbers. Uh, having some fairly significant issues with the phone system that have created some problems with missed calls over the last several months. Um, none that resulted in any negative outcomes. They were able to reach out to those people. But we are in, uh, pretty serious conversations with the vendor that supplied the phone system for not only our system, but for consortium of several nine-one-one centers. So, uh, there'll be more on that as, as we progress. The radio project that I've been talking about for a long time now is about six months behind schedule. Uh, primarily due, in fact, completely due to labor and industry's inability to have people to go out and inspect the work. Uh, they're actually running that far behind that it's gonna put the project about six months behind because they have to go out and inspect the, the civil work that's being done at the towers. Um, and then last, uh, it was Keep Flowing, our executive director's last meeting. He had announced his retirement a year ago to give us plenty of time. So this was his last meeting. And Wendy Hill, who's been, um, chosen to be the, the next executive director, will take over that position on February first. And that is my report.
So what happens in the case of like with TCOM when there, it's a sales tax-based funding when a lot more funding comes in than they expect? Is that, how, how's that play out in the, in that TCOM's budget?
Uh, you know, it, it, no, very similar to the city reserves. Um, you know, you bank the money for reserve for the future when, when the sales tax collections aren't as good as expected. Yeah, very similar.
Thank you. Um, next up is, uh, Deputy Mayor Miller.
I do not have a report this week. There, uh, several, uh, things got canceled, but, uh, in the next council meeting, I'll probably have a little five.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member seven.
Little report.
Uh, council member Kunkel.
I also have no report.
Well, just like that, we've reached the end of our agenda. It's great to see all of you for the first meeting of the new year. Again, I appreciate all of everyone's support here and look forward to working with Deputy Mayor Miller. Um, and with that, as always, keep it classy, Lacey. I'll call this meeting a journey.
Welcome, Robin.
Welcome.